I'd like to call this meeting into order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just.
Mr. McCoslin, will you please take role?
Mrs. Weiss, Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppe.
Here.
Mrs. Janasek.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak. Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Scalzo, seconded by Mrs. Turner.
Voting is open. Mrs. Janasek?
Yes, I'm not showing voting, but I'll work on that. Thanks.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from our August 2nd, August 9th, and August 23rd meetings.
So move. Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to announce two executive sessions, one on September 20th for Personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. And that's it. The report, Student Government, that's right, so that person had emailed me and said they were unable to attend, but we did get them last week, so we got an update. PTO-PTA report.
I'm Justineer. I'm the William Penn PTO president. So Abraham Lincoln, Lincoln kicked off the year with a wonderful turnout for their kindergarten teddy bear picnic. It was a beautiful day where the kids enjoyed doing crafts, meeting new friends, playing on the playground, and hearing a story from their new teachers. A wonderful way to get everyone excited for their first day. They are busy preparing for their annual festival that will be held on Friday, October 14th. There will be food trucks, inflatables, games, raffles, a haunted trail, and more. Be sure to save the date. Ben Franklin Elementary, it has been a busy first month of school. They had their first Franklin Friday, their first PTO meeting, school pictures, their first spirit night at Mo's, their first spirit week, and their first event, Bingo. George Washington Elementary, George Washington started the year with popsicles on the playground and a welcome back breakfast for teachers and staff. They just wrapped up their most successful gear sale to date and are currently running a fall mum sale with Flora Park. They will be holding their fall book fair in a couple weeks, as well as Black Light Bingo event in early October. William Penn Elementary, the William Penn PTO has had a busy few weeks welcoming their families back to school. They had a fantastic kindergarten and new student night on August 24th. They also had open house on September 8th, where in addition to the William Penn families meeting with their teachers, they held a ribbon cutting ceremony for their new playground, Gaga Pit. They had a bounce house, information tables, food trucks, and the opportunity for the kids to play and families to connect. Neil Armstrong Middle School, the Neil Armstrong Middle School PTO started the 2022-2023 school year with their back-to-school bash. This event, which is free to families, had a large turnout of guests who came to enjoy snacks, games, retos, airbrush tattoos, and music. The PTO would like to thank the parents, Mr. Patterson, and the community for support of their events. Independence Middle School, the IMS PTSO is starting off the year with a membership drive and has already begun plans for the annual holiday craft fair, which will be held on Saturday, November 19th, in the IMS cafeteria.
Thank you. Are there any committee reports?
I have something.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just skipped something. Solicitor report. And the thing we do need to report is we have a new solicitor. Her name is Megan Turnbull, right?
Correct.
Okay. And this is her first official meeting, her voting meeting here. She was at the committee meeting last week. So I'll turn it over to you for any solicitor items.
All right. No, I just want to thank you for the warm welcome. In the last two weeks, I've had an opportunity to work with some of your administrators, and we've had some great interactions. So I look forward to more of those. I'm just a different partner of Weisberg, Hart, and Kramer. I'm one of the Equity Partners, and we proudly serve you. We look forward to working with you on a continuing basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay. Now, I'm sorry, Mr. Janasek.
Yes, as a municipal liaison. And we do have at our places, the municipality is holding a Day of Healing. It will be Sunday, November 6th. However, they're updating the time. It's now 1:00 to 4:30. It will be held at the Community Center. And it's a day for the community to come together and reflect and heal from the losses we've suffered over the last couple of years, whether that's from the opioid crisis, or COVID, or anything else. They're going to have speakers, the mayor, the chief, Judge Arnoney, several of the local area churches are going to be sending speakers. They'll have people talking about healing from grief and loss, and coming together as a community to support one another. There'll be activities and crafts, mindfulness things, opportunities for tables in the area for people who do therapy or exercise. I believe outreach team and family will be there. The district's been invited if we'd like to send anyone or send materials for helping children through grief, that sort of thing. And they're going to end it all with the celebration of life moving into the holiday season. And the municipality just asked that we share that information with everyone. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to start with sharing with the board and the community a letter we received just this morning from the Secretary of Education in Washington. He writes Bethel Park High School, "In recognition of Bethel Park High School, congratulations on your recognition as a 2022 exemplary high-performing national blue ribbon school. Your commitment to building a welcoming, nurturing school community and strong foundation of academic learning for every child is clear. Each day you work to empower and inspire your students to become lifelong learners and engaged citizens, and your efforts represent a powerful example of excellence in education. The U.S. Department of Education acknowledges your unwavering commitment to the well-being of every child and the possibilities that you create for the next generation. Schools like yours demonstrate that all students, no matter their background or circumstances, can meet the highest expectations that we have for their achievement. Your recognition as a national blue ribbon school was made possible through your intentional collaboration with families, parents, and the community. Thank you for your shared vision and dedication to every student's academic and mental health needs. You show what is possible for every student in America to succeed and thrive. Congratulations on your accomplishments. Your school is truly inspiring example of students, teachers, staff, and administrators, parents, families, and community leaders all working together through challenging circumstances to prepare our nation's students to succeed. Signed, Miguel Cordona, Secretary of Education." So there'll be a delegation from Bethel Park that will attend the National Blue Ribbon Ceremony in Washington the first week of November, at which point we'll bring that delegation back here to the board to present Blue Ribbon awards that were shared with that delegation in Washington. Also on my agenda to share tonight is an update on the strategic plan. And tonight I'm going to actually cover two separate categories, buckets, if you will. The last two on the list, as equally important to the others, of course, is the Facilities and Infrastructure Committee report and the Budget and Finance. Facilities and infrastructure, of course, has been a high priority and very time-consuming part of the board's work over the last six months. You've been meeting separately every month on just facility-related issues. So there's not much of a newer uncovered territory here with the facilities plan. Just know, I think we all know, that there is a separate facilities master plan, sort of a 10-year look out from 2021 as to what we want to accomplish in terms of facilities and infrastructure in the Bethel Park School District that we're trying to follow. Of course, this master plan will outlive the strategic plan, but it also includes things like boilers and roofs and other infrastructure necessities in the buildings over the next 10 years' time. The second bucket that we're drawing from tonight is the Budget and Finance bucket. And there were two goals that were identified in that development. The first was to develop a long-range, five-years-or-greater budget plan as to what we, as the district and the community, can expect in terms of income and revenue, as well as expenses over the next five years. I think Mr. McCoslin's been putting pieces of that together, trying to balance what the economy is telling us about the future, as well as what our needs will be in terms of contracts and debt service and so forth. Probably see that sometime in the fall, early winter. And the second goal was to come up with some sort of public-facing dashboard that would be able to report out to our community, the return on our taxpayers' investment, and use some sort of benchmarking schools to help us measure our success with those goals and financial goals that we'd have. Not much progress to report there because those two systems are still under development. But again, this was a five-year plan, and this is just one of the 17 other goals we're working on as a system to move Bethel Park to our next best. We'll be back at the beginning again next month. We'll start over the cycle again. We'll start going back to the first of the goals, which was curriculum and instruction, and work our way through each month with another highlight. It goes without saying, I think, that this dashboard, this report, is available on our website, the Strategic Planning Scorecard, if you call it that. The entirety of it is available in real time on our website. And as it's updated, it's also updated on the website. I'm going to turn my time over here to both our communications and curriculum folks to share their updates. We'll start with Mr. Cromie and his five big things.
All right. It's always a pleasure to talk about the five big things that are happening in Bethel Park. As always, there are so many more than five things happening, and you always have to choose between them. But our first one is a very obvious one. As we just referenced, Bethel Park High School has been named a national blue ribbon school by the United States Department of Education. This was its 39th cohort, and the National Blue Ribbon Schools program has bestowed awards to approximately 9,000 schools nationally since 1982. Bethel Park joins the Arts Academy at Benjamin Rush in Philadelphia to become just the 36th and 37th high schools to ever receive that distinction in the state of Pennsylvania. That's a really big deal because they've been doing it since 1982. So if you know that group of administrators and that group of teachers, you're not really surprised because they work really hard, and they're very talented, and they work really well together. But I'm very proud and very pleased for our families at the work that our students did and at the work that our staff did. So I definitely think they deserve every bit of kudos we can give them. Our second thing is our English as a Second Language students recently had the opportunity to listen to Javier Avia, a poet and educator. And he spoke about his experiences growing up as a Latino-American, and to encourage students to embrace their names and their cultures while living in America. The AIU-sponsored event also allowed students to participate in a variety of group activities in order to meet students from other neighboring districts, encourage critical thinking skills, and to learn about other cultures. Our third big thing is a really interesting thing. Last week at Memorial Elementary, students were encouraged to bring in loose change and dress in various themed costumes in support of Melody Sable, a student at the school who suffers from Ewing sarcoma, a rare cancer that attacks your bones. Melody, the students also participated in themed events and created a lot of interest in the cause. For the week, they raised approximately $3,000. The winning classroom, the classroom that raised the most, got a pizza party, so.
Actually, Jim, there were two classes. They tied.
Oh, there were two that tied? Okay, very good. So two pizza parties, or do they have to split the pizza? Well, very good. So the point is Memorial really showed up for Melody, and it was a really wonderful event. And it's kind of like with the Joey Fabus thing, you can see Bethel Park really supports, and it's a really wonderful community in that regard. Speaking of which, I also had the unique opportunity last week to go to Elizabeth Forward. And Bethel Park, about 30 Bethel Park students were among the 177 students from 13 area schools who participated in the Seventh Annual Camp of Champions event at Elizabeth Forward High School. The students had the opportunity to participate in a number of football drills and other skills challenges, and our host from Elizabeth Forward did a spectacular job. I can't say enough nice things about them, or the Steelers who were on hand to greet them. Brett Keisel was every bit the gentleman that you would imagine him to be, and Jeremy Tooman, who was a former tight end for the Steelers, was also just wonderful with our kids. And I was very proud of our students and excited for their opportunity. You can see in their eyes, they were just so excited and so starstruck. It was wonderful. And finally, this is homecoming weekend. I just want to take a moment to congratulate this year's homecoming court. Marquise Armstrong Ross from the Chess Club, Elena Banks from the Marching Band, Danari Klax from Hawkeye, Victoria Di Pasquale, who plays softball, Colin Fink from the Ways and Means Committee, Dylan Fennell from the Fall Play, Mia Gerber, who plays volleyball, Jasper Harder Hughes, which is an amazing name, diving, Carly Omara, who is a lacrosse player, Gabby Shogan, who is part of BP Cheer, Sebastian Shine, who plays on our twice defending state baseball champions, and Melina Stewart, who I know pretty well from SGA, and she's a wonderful girl. So congratulations to all of them, and good luck this Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Cromie. And we'll move on now to our Bright Spots in Curriculum and Instruction from Mrs. Figlioli and Mrs. Wells.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Oh, good morning. Wow. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to present our Bright Spots in the Curriculum Department this evening. The first thing that we are going to talk about is that this is year two of us using the MAP Growth Assessment, the measure of academic progress. And so this year, our growth implementation plan is going to focus on bringing the data from the MAP assessments into the classroom. For the second year, we were able to host the NWEA MAP meetings at Bethel Park. We brought over 10 districts to the high school where we held our regional meeting. We had over 25 participants, and we got to meet together with our representative and discuss ways in which other schools in the area are using the data that they are getting from the MAP assessments, which are given three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring, except for kindergarten students. They do not take the tests in the fall, and how we can utilize that data for our instructional planning. And so that meeting was held last week, and then this week, on Thursday, the student district will have to our delay so that we can work with our staff on some instructional planning that will be based on the MAP data. And teachers will have time to go through some of the newer reports and to look at the actual data of the students in their classrooms and begin to plan individually or as a team to meet the needs of those students that make up their classrooms. So we are really looking forward to moving forward with our MAP implementation and getting that data to drive our instruction.
Second bright thing this month was International DOT Day, our second annual celebration of this event. And the teachers, again, really outdid themselves this year. The district provided creativity kits for the teachers. So each classroom received scratch bookmarks, magic scratch bookmarks that the children could make to use in the classroom. They received markers and coffee filters to make dot art. I will say, it was really awesome to see. Some of the kids are coming with custom shirts. Their parents are making them. They're making them themselves. But they were definitely well represented this year. Another cool activity that we did was called One Black Dot. And so each student received one black dot sticker, and they had to use it in a drawing in some way. So you can see that the children had, no two drawings were alike. You had some students who saw an animal, some students who saw a tree. I love the little guy in the corner. He saw it on a rocket ship. So it was really neat to see how they utilized that one sticker as the basis for a masterpiece. Something that we added this year, like I said earlier when we talked about moving into this year, we added a new book by the same author, Peter Reynolds, in a set of three books that he calls The Create Trilogy. So this year, we included the book Ish. And the central theme of this book is about not letting someone squish your ish. And so each classroom did sign the Don't Squish My Ish pledge. And so we pledge to think ishfully. We will allow our ideas to flow freely without worry. We will be creative and not allow anyone to squish our ish, including ourselves. So that really, again, is that theme of creativity and courage and collaboration is, again, well represented in the book Ish. So we were able to add that to our DOT Day celebrations this year. Some other cool things that I saw teachers do that were not included in the district, creativity kits. Kristin Johnson, who is an art teacher at Ben Franklin, she did a study of Wasley Kandinsky, who is the founder of, the father, is known for the father of abstract art. And the piece up there is actually one of his pieces, and a lot of his pieces focus on dots. So it was really cool. She did a whole study with the kids, and you can see in that photo, they're holding, they did a new mural for this year, and on the wall behind them, you can see that the mural still remains from last year. So every student contributed a tile to that mural from Benjamin Franklin. It was a really awesome activity. Ms. Huth, who is new to elementary school, who came from Neil Armstrong, she utilized an app called Quiver. It's a 3D coloring app. So if you can see, these kids are, they've taken a picture of their dot, and then it brings it to life virtually. So I wanted to commend her for going above and beyond. The students' reactions were priceless to seeing the dots hovering on the iPads. And finally, the dots were everywhere. They were all over the sidewalk. They appeared in gym class. And again, I just want to commend the elementary teachers because they went above and beyond the expectation for this day. And I look forward to celebrating this annually, every year, but creativity also being something that is a part of what we do every day, not just on DOT Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Figlioli. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on the agenda items? Any call-ins?
No call-ins.
Let's move on to our business items. Mrs. Janasek, can you take the consent agenda?
Sure. There are 25 items on the consent agenda. I move items 1 through 25.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Janasek, seconded by Mr. Scalzo.
I'd ask that we table, I am motion to table number 23 for revisions.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
So just a little bit of commentary. The reason that we just tabled item 23, which is a policy that deals with student activity fees and how those fees are dispositioned after a certain period of time, the, we have gotten a lot of feedback since the last meeting when we discussed this, and so we're going to pull this off the table, make some revisions to this policy. That's why we, these policies appear three meetings. We do three reviews of these to give everybody ample time to review them until we vote. And up until we vote, they're always eligible to take off the agenda, take off the table, and to revise. So that's what we'll do with this one. So for this, let's just take a voice vote so that Mr. McCoslin doesn't need to change his voting software.
I actually have it ready.
Oh, you have it ready?
Yeah.
You want to vote online? Okay, let's try that, then.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. So that takes us back to the main motion that Mrs. Janasek made. I guess we should open that up for any other discussion, anything else people want to remove.
All right. I'm trying to get back there. Now it's not working for me. Okay. Now I'm back. Voting's open on the consent agenda. Mrs. Turner. Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor, can you take the Personnel Committee items?
Yes. Under Personnel, there are seven items. I'll read them. One, approval of extra-duty responsibility program for this year. Two, approval of unpaid leave of absence. Three, approval of 2022-23 salaries non Act 93 group. Four, Department of Facilitator Chair positions for '22-23. Five, appointment of personnel. Six, a memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Transportation Department Council eighty-four. And seven, acceptance of resignations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Voting is open. Mrs. Janasek?
I'm going to vote yes. It does say it's only for number seven.
Yeah, I'll change it later.
Okay.
As you do them all in one group. Motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoppe, can you take Facility, since Mr. Modrak isn't here this evening?
Yes. We have one item. It is the approval of the purchase of a modular restroom, storage, and concession stand facility. Do you move that?
Second.
Voting is open.
Yeah, I wanted to ask.
Could I ask a question first? I was going to ask.
Yeah, sorry.
I was going to ask if somebody could.
If I could hit my button fast enough.
Could somebody just review for the public? We're getting some funds from different areas, and how much of a commitment is this for the district as opposed to the total number?
Yes, for sure. Thank you. Though the project price is $271,000, the municipality is contributing $100,000 towards that project, and Allegheny Health Network, HN, is donating $40,000 towards the project, which leaves $131,000 for the school district's share of the costs, which had been reserved in capital projects.
Thank you so much.
It's worth noting also that Dr. Walsh had given an update on the strategic plan. This was an item, maybe not surprisingly, but it was one of the most popular items requested through the community surveys that we've done. So we can check one item off the list, so.
And can we ask an additional question? Right now, this, you know, we're looking at two restrooms. Right now, this, you know, we're looking at two restrooms per area, or per item, correct? There's two male and two female restrooms?
Mr. Quinn, you did the final.
No, it's two unisex restrooms.
Okay. My question is, can we add on to that? I mean, this is going to be used by a lot of people. It's going to start to solve the problem, but it's going to be used by more. So can this facility be added on to at any time?
Not at any time. It's pretty much a standalone building.
I think the, you know, our approach to this was looking at facilities similar like Millennium Park and Simmons Park, and the kind of, the design and the size and cost of those facilities is what led us to this recommendation today. It certainly gets a lot of traffic in that area, but the per-square-footage price to add additional restrooms that would just made the project out of our budget. And so we believe that it's going to serve as good a purpose, if not better, than what we currently use, that being those porta-johns. Yes, we could, you could add, we could make it bigger, but it's going to add to the price tag. And I think the district's trying to put every dollar we can towards instruction, towards curriculum, towards even the elementary construction project, and not towards an extra outdoor bathroom.
I believe the next size up out of restrooms was $335,000.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Grisbeck, are you able to take Finance? Is your audio and everything working okay?
Sure thing.
Oh, yes.
We have one item tonight under Finance, payment for bus garage renovation project, application two to the tune of $220,513.14, and application one for $245,182.41. Does anyone have any questions about that item?
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hoppe seconded. Mr. Grisbeck made the motion. Okay, now questions, anybody?
Voting's open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Policy Committee, we have a second reading.
This has to do with, let me get back up top. Policy 127 with the assessment skills. And again, I'll read it so parents understand what's being changed. It says, "For students in middle school who are not proficient in math and/or reading, will be scheduled for intervention programs in lieu of foreign language exploratory or the STEAM enrichment classes. Proficiency is determined by the school's administration, analysis of the student's performance on the PSSA, map test, and report card grades. Placement can also come from teacher recommendations in consultation with the parents, guardians, or by a parent/guardian request. Special education student placements and the intervention is in an IEP team decision."
Thank you. And if anybody's listening to this policy reading for the first time, similar to the one we did for the student funds earlier, we took this off the agenda, made some revisions to include additional ways for students to be recommended or identified for this program. But it is entirely focused on addressing a gap that we've had for a long time, and that is, you know, the continuing, you know, improvement of math skills as students progress from elementary into middle school and high school. So this is a resource for students to improve these math skills because, you know, math is one of those subjects, like others, that if you get behind, it's hard to catch up because you're always learning new things. So I think it's a great resource at the right point of a student's educational journey. So there's nothing to vote on in this topic. This will be our next voting meeting. That takes us to public comments on anything related to the school. No call-ins?
No.
Okay, thank you. Board comments. Any board comments?
I'd like to thank the administration for manning the Community Day booth. It was a huge hit. It's a...
Very nice.
Mrs. Figlioli and Dr. Schu, Dr. Minch, Dr. Walsh, several board members. It's a long day building catapults out of popsicle sticks and rubber bands and little cups. So thank you so much. I really, I loved seeing you all in action. It was great.
What a cleverly, cleverly simple STEAM application. I mean, it was great. You did a fantastic job.
I second that.
Yeah.
That was a really, really great activity. Thank you.
Sending them home with the slingshot device, you know, seemed like a...
Only soft...
Seemed like a... I was going to say, seemed like a treasure until they got home and put rocks or something in it.
Well, wait a minute. One was putting rocks in the parking lot in it. We discovered that we had to start saying that, thanks to my third grader. So, and he did get to use rocks at home, but they went into the woods, so...
Oh, I wanted to say, and I'm sure the board would agree, all of our best to Melody Sable. We hope she's doing well. And thanks for covering that. That was very sweet. We have good kids.
Any other comments? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Derek, you can't second your own motion.
No, that was a question, not a statement. Sorry.
Give it to Derek.
Derek, okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.